Thank you, Chair Colette, and again, I really want to reiterate the collaborative approach that we've had the last two years. This has been a two-year process almost in terms of working with staff and really with Chief Jepson and her staff. It's been a great process for us to really look at and review and how to get better. We always want to get better at everything that we do, and this is a good opportunity for us to do so. You'll hear what we will be doing, what will be recommending in terms of program shifts based on C Change's recommendations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mead. But again, we have great appreciation, really appreciate the city, Chief Jepson, the staff from the police department in terms of their collaborative approach to be able to improve our system. And again, at the end of the day, it's about kids and making sure that we do our best for our kids and our families. So, Dr. Mead?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Baldairis. Good evening, Board, and thank you very much for the time this evening for us to discuss our school resource officers. This evening, the plan is for us to review information with you as we go through the slides, and at the end of our presentation, you'll have the opportunity for questions. We have a strong interest in hearing what your questions and comments are, but we also want to make sure that we have time to present the information upfront to you as an entire school board. So, thank you. Next, I would like to take a moment just to introduce some of the key individuals who are going to be presenting to you this evening. First, Shelley Bailey Shaw, our Public Communication Officer, will be speaking to you about our communication plan. Dr. Danielle Hudson, Administrator for Student Services, will be first up after I'm done with opening comments to address mental health. Rick Puente, our Director of Public Safety, is joining us as well. Susan Rodriguez, our Chief Human Resources Officer, will be speaking to us regarding supports for staff overall and our ongoing work in that arena. Ken Struckmeyer, Executive Administrator for Middle Schools, will also be joining us and joining the police chief at the table. And actually, I believe Ken's joining us a couple of different times up at the table tonight. Next up, three partners or an agency of partnership and tremendous partners in our work come from the Beaverton Police Department. It's a pleasure for me to introduce to you Chief Jepson, who's here this evening, in addition to Lieutenant Matt Kingsbury and Sergeant Mike Buerstorf. So, it's a pleasure to have all three of them here this evening and also speak to the contributions and the work in which they actively engage in with the school district, and you'll be hearing from them soon as well. As you know, the C Change report provided recommendations grouped into three packages. Those packages were Package 1, and that was an emphasis on expanding access to mental health, behavioral health, and wellness services. Package 2A was focused or is focused on redefining Beaverton School District's relationship with law enforcement and how we actually take steps to move forward in a continued positive manner. Package 2B is a second element of that, and that is to focus on expanding communication, data reporting, and continuing for program improvement overall. Brief historical perspective, as was outlined, and I'm not going to go through all the details of that, but just in a nutshell, the SRO program has evolved over time. Back into the late 1970s, a huge focus was just on general safety and bicycle safety and was a major role for our law enforcement with our school district. In the early to mid 90s, community policing became a major factor for us in the Beaverton area, as well as, I would say, throughout the state and nation. In the mid 90s, we implemented the DARE program, or it was implemented via Washington County Sheriff's Office and the Beaverton Police Department in conjunction with one another, in addition to a program called GREAT. And GREAT stands for Gang Resistance Education and Training. Both were highly involved, both agencies were highly involved in working with our school staff and our students throughout the district. And a response then in the late 90s, in response to the shootings, unfortunately occurring more prevalently across school districts in the nation, a shift to school safety throughout the district, as you saw also throughout our nation, and the trend of community policing truly moved well beyond that. Highlights were also provided on the typical activities that our SROs may be involved in on a daily basis, and there's a myriad of those. And those are included in the report, but that's in a general fashion, and there's a lot of other details on which they work with our staff and our community alike. Also included is the district philosophy in the overall report regarding our approach to discipline and interventions as a school district. I will own upfront that one of the factors, one of the major factors that is inhibiting us from doing our very best work is consistency across the district, and we are facilitating that, and you'll hear more about that as what we're doing with work with our administrators to ensure that we are improving our consistency in actions throughout the entire school district. Next, thank you. In Package 1, our first portion of our conversation with you this evening is to provide additional context and background in the changes and enhancements around mental health and behavioral health and wellness services. The assumption is made as you always do, you read your materials and you're well-prepared for board meetings. The information you're going to be hearing this evening at the table from our participants is adding additional information and an additional layer to the context of this report for you. In Package 2A, concentration and lens on the types of services our SROs provide throughout the district is a major factor for us and will continue, and you'll see those elements. And we've got Chief Jepson, who will be able to speak to those. And finally, in Package 2B, with the emphasis on communication, expanding background for our community, expanding training for our staff and data collection, reporting, and most importantly, improvement overall in our program, will be our summation comments this evening. I would like to just emphasize the communication end of things in this portion of the presentation is we've got some great elements to our communication. One of the pieces we've already heard from board members is, so what is it that we're doing to help make sure that parents know what students are receiving in terms of training to help better improve that communication link and better understanding throughout not only home but school? As many of these things that we teach our kids at school apply at a grocery store, they apply at THPRD, or any other venue in which a student may find themselves. These are good life skills that we're teaching our kids in a school setting. With that, let us begin with Package 2B and Dr. Danielle Hudson.
Good evening, Superintendent Baldairis, Board Chair Colette, and the Beaverton School District School Board members. Tonight, I'm going to be addressing many of the items in the C Change Package 1 report recommendations, but I want to begin by highlighting our school board's dedication to behavioral health and wellness within our district. Many of the recommendations that we saw in Package 1 from C Change were already interventions that we had put into place before we received that package. It's through the commitment of our school board, our budget committee, and our advocacy of students and staff within our district that we were already ahead of the times in terms of this work. So, as we talk about Package 1, I hope we'll celebrate the work of our BSD staff who are committed to the well-being of our students and celebrate our opportunity for coordination with our community partners. So, with that, we're going to start talking about our Behavioral Health and Wellness Project. So, this fall, we have implemented a Tier 1 Behavioral Health and Wellness Social/Emotional Learning Curriculum pre-K-12, actually, pre-K-21 in our schools. So, we are in the process, after quarter one, where we will start collecting data on the effect of those interventions within our school setting. We plan to share that information with Central Office and then also in a board report through Superintendent Baldairis, just to give you an update where we are. As you can imagine, we just implemented this, so we're waiting to gather the information, but we'll report on that as soon as we have that. But what I can talk about are some of the anecdotal information that we've collected. So, at the secondary level, we've heard that the implementation of our Tier 1 supports, it gives classroom teachers talking points to have more authentic conversations and connections with students, fostering deeper relationships with those students. At the elementary level, we've heard it gives classroom teachers easily accessible and consistent materials. Some concepts overlap and align with our social sciences curriculum, we have common community-wide language that we're using, and concepts that lead to whole building social/emotional learning, not just in the classroom setting. And then strengths from both secondary and elementary that we've heard are the work of our social/emotional learning committees in our schools. Our student success coaches and our school supports specialists are leading important building-wide work for implementation of social/emotional learning in our schools, and that's beginning to center student and family voices in our conversations, integrating and embedding equity work, restorative justice, and creating more equitable and cultural climates within our school settings. That's just some of the anecdotal information we're hearing from the start of the school year. When we talk about professional development, one of the questions that's come forward to me is about our connection with law enforcement and school administrators and training together. I was really fortunate that the Beaverton Police Department allowed two of their officers to attend a student threat assessment training with us in Salem this fall. We also had our Washington County Behavioral Health Partners there and our district staff there to be able to come together and talk about how we address student threats within our school. Rick Puente was also there, and it was just really an opportunity to recalibrate our work around threats. We are also, we have identified, working with Washington County Sheriff's Department and BBD, specific trainings that we want to outline for our officers who are in our schools and to come alongside our administrators and our school staff, where we're looking at training around restorative practices, de-escalation strategies, information about student disabilities, and other key aspects that we think officers need to have as they're entering in our school and understanding our school community, and so that our school community can also learn from our officers. Another aspect that's happened this year that we've had really grown is our partnership with Washington County Behavioral Health. They have helped us fund a series of wellness rooms and calming corners throughout the district, and they are funding the resources for those materials. So, we will be doing data collection twice this year around the effectiveness of those wellness rooms, how many students we are supporting in there. So, when we start looking at our Behavioral Health and Wellness Project, it's really running strong around that Tier 1 support this year, and we're really benefiting from that collaboration with our community partners. All right. Moving on to our next slide, I'll have Mr. Struckmeyer come and join us as well. I have the privilege to start introducing the slide and talking about restorative practice and giving a little bit of history around restorative practices in the Beaverton School District. When we started implementing restorative practices, it was back in 2014, and we referred to it as Restorative Justice, or RJ. So, we've really moved to a restorative practice language where it's really about our practice, not just justice. It's about how we're responding. And really, the purpose of our restorative practice training has been to equip schools with tools and strategies to build and foster authentic relationships between staff and students and establish a restorative school climate and culture and reduce exclusionary discipline practices. Our initial entry into restorative practice in the district actually came out in 2014 after we did a deeper dive into our disciplinary data, particularly at the middle school level. Since 2015, we have trained over 1,000 certified staff, classified, and administrators, and they've attended training throughout the years. RP trainings address foundational concepts around authentic communication, ways of being, and circle strategies. And RP trainings also train staff on how to facilitate a restorative conversation or a conference. I'm going to add a couple other things here. So, what you should know is we have eight BSD TOSSAs in the district who are restorative practices trainers. Their role as a trainer is in addition to their other roles. So, these people are social workers, counselors, student success coaches, but really are trainers. There's eight of them, and they are educators on special assignment, and so one aspect of their larger job is to do RP training. And then they have really invested in the training of our, you know, social workers and all of our BH&amp;W staff so that they can be in the schools, running restorative conferences, and then working with teachers and staff on implementing those practices. And some of the examples of how we've used this is pretty often, a real popular time that this happens is actually when we have a student and a teacher disagreement. So, maybe a student has acted out in the classroom, there has been some disruption, and so whether it's our student success coach or our school support specialist, one of their roles is then to bring that teacher and that student together to talk about the incident and really try to get to an understanding of why that might have happened. Oftentimes, we'll see both the student and the teacher in tiers because they learn about each other through that process and kind of can understand where each person is coming from. So, it's less about you've done something wrong and more about why did this happen and how can we prevent it from happening and having both parties understand where everyone is coming from. So, with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues here.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Next, I just wanted to mention to you, and it's in your report on page 18, it's referring to the Student Code of Conduct, and this is the Student Code of Conduct that we have on our website and is accessible to our community, and we ask our families to review this on an annual basis. One of the major pieces that Mr. Struckmeyer, Rick Puente, myself, and Camilla Ostrink did this last summer, and I'm sorry, I'm missing one person, Matt Castile. And Matt Castile, we went back through our Student Code of Conduct, as this is revised every year, and we're making updates. One of the revisions, major revisions that we did, was to make changes as noted on page 18. Those highlighted in green were removed from an automatic notification to law enforcement. We really wanted to be able to, in essence, for lack of a better word, decriminalize the actions of our students in our school and really take a look at it and say, what opportunities do we have to work with a student for learning to be able to not make that same mistake again in the future? Again, that was really a focus for us as a school district here, is really trying to deal with these issues in-house with the resources that we do have, and that could be a counselor, a social worker, an administrator, any number of positions, including teachers, and teachers are a major vehicle in helping to resolve these issues within our buildings. So, again, it was really to isolate what are the codes within our Student Code of Conduct that we need to make sure that our law enforcement partners are involved in that process with us, not in the process of discipline, but in terms of the act of what the student chose to do. So, something pretty drastic is somebody who's distributing drugs to their peers. That is an action that is well beyond the scope of not just general discipline, but there's also potential criminal activity that could potentially occur there. That happens primarily, I would say, at the high school level. That's my past experience, having been at all three levels. It doesn't happen often, but it does come up from time to time. I also want to raise your attention to, on Code 24, you'll notice a number of those actions were removed from police intervention there, but there was one that was maintained, and that is, and it's very clear to our administrators, in the case of a sexual assault, that is something we automatically need to make sure that we include law enforcement in because that obviously potentially leads to a criminal act in that instance upon investigation. So, wanted to make sure that not all elements were removed. I will also speak to the fact that there will be factors in which we ebb and flow in this, and that there are circumstances that change over time. You may have a student that has done the same act three, four, five, and six times. At what point in time is it no longer, are we in an educational mode, but we've got to make a shift, and it may be in collaboration with law enforcement that we engage in that conversation, but ideally involving parents as well?
Next up.
Good evening. Ken Struckmeyer, Middle School Exec, and it's my pleasure to give you some more background around our student conduct plans and our school success frameworks. A conceptual way to understand this is that our approach to student behavior is in a student conduct plan, and many times, conduct alone needs to also look at the academic outcomes, the attendance outcomes, and other outcomes we want to have for students. So, a school success framework incorporates student behavior, but it's going to be broader than that. So, for the purpose of our discussion, a student conduct plan is developed in collaboration between school leadership and between the teachers and the other staff on the campus. Under our contract in Article 9, there's language that calls for an annual review and an opportunity for members of the BEA to provide feedback about what's working and what's not working. So, that generally is going to happen sometime in May or June, and that dialogue provides clear insights on areas where the professional development worked and areas where professional development might be strengthened. It might identify some gaps in communication with families, some gaps in our work with students, and that provides the admin team the opportunity during summer to be thoughtful about the approach that they will be taking when staff returns in August and the communication that needs to go to families, the work that's going to be done with students, and the way that they're going to measure their success throughout the coming year. So, those student conduct plans then lead to the professional development, as I said, and they define what happens when there is a problem. So, if we go back to the Student Code of Conduct, it might describe behaviors and expectations, but the question is what happens? And so, there are some levels that occur. So, for example, sometimes a student's behavior is one that our very skilled teaching staff can identify, take on, address, and have students remain in the classroom and engage in learning. But other times, that behavior is so dangerous or creates harm that they need help from outside the classroom. When we're working with our staff to understand those, we might refer to those as Level 1 or Level 2 behaviors. A Level 1 behavior means that the teacher is able to engage with the learner, to address it, and to move on. So, that might look like there's an interaction that's negative, it's reported to the teacher, the teacher understands that interaction, and they're able with confidence to address the student behavior and to clarify the expectations. At other times, that isn't the case, and so in a Level 2, that might result in a referral to the office and to the administrator who would review that and would provide guidance back to the student, guidance back to the teacher, and they would interrupt the harm, create a safe learning environment, and return the person to learning as quickly as possible. So, that's some language that we work on understanding with school leaders and having them in turn turn back to school staff. We believe in empowering teachers to work with students directly, to communicate directly with families, is the best way forward in many cases, but not all, and at times, that communication and that support needs to happen outside the classroom. If and when parents are ever concerned about those interactions, the best thing is to always go back to the school team to share that information of what they're concerned about and to work collaboratively, and we know that one of the key things moving forward is to strengthen our work with families, to educate them about the approach to behavior at their school and to understand how to be a partner in that work. So, as we're moving on, our school success framework would enable us to look not only at behavior, but at other indicators. So, we believe that behavior must be addressed to create a safe learning environment, which predicts engagement, which predicts that students will want to be present, that attendance is positively linked to that. We also know that student outcomes mean that kids need to be ready to learn. So, our work with behavior is foundational, and it's really important to all of our other shared outcomes we want for students. We work with staff, as I said, over the full year to strengthen their skills, and we work increasingly often with administrators, building to building, to share perspectives, to share dilemmas, to calibrate, to make sure that regardless of where your student goes to school, that our approach is consistently based on care and concern, and it is helping students to learn, to feel safe, and to be ready to engage in learning.
All right.
So, we're going to move on to looking at staff capacity for building relationships. So, when we start and we think about mental health training for our staff, so during pre-service week this year, all of our staff received training on ADDIEs Act, which is an act around suicide prevention and intervention. So, we designated time to train all staff on responding and looking for signs of suicidal ideation, and then also how to deliver lessons to our students. We also have the benefit this year of on January 13th, offering a classified training symposium, and during that time, classified staff will have access to youth mental health first aid training, another program called Questioned, Persuaded, and Refer, and other suicide prevention training offered through the Association for Suicide Prevention. We also have, as part of our training program for our Behavioral Health and Wellness staff, is required assist training, which is a three-day training that really focuses on the signs of suicide, but then also how we postvention after we have an incident when someone has completed suicide. So, those are some of the trainings we've had. We are continuing, as many of the board members know, in the 2020, 2021 school year, we began the implementation of BH&amp;W Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams in our school, and we finally have had the opportunity to get them to their full-blown plan that we created in the 1920 school year. So, schools are continuing to meet regularly, they're refining their purpose and function as they meet. We collect data and report it out to them every quarter, so as a team, they can look at their data and dive in to see what are they missing, who might they be missing, and where can they beef up their supports. This year, we're in the process of a formal adoption for Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions, and we will be implementing a universal mental health screener next month in our secondary schools. We are also working with schools to provide a decision-making matrix, or providing them with a decision-making matrix to help them with progress monitoring and identifying what interventions are best for students. We are working with our IT department to streamline our data so that students, or staff can go in and track interventions of students in a one-stop-shop location. One of the questions that was posed to me is what budget, when budget cuts occur, what will we do to ensure we are addressing student needs? One of the things I have to emphasize is the reason why Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams have been so effective in our district is because they are multidisciplinary. It isn't one person or two people, but it includes a student success coach or a school support specialist, a counselor, a social worker, a nurse, a school psychologist, and this year, for the first time ever, a substance abuse specialist. So, in those, that model of behavioral health brings all these individuals together and their training and their background to be able to bring that to the table, from the student success coach who understands the classroom impact to the social worker who understands the home dynamic and mental health, and then also to our school psychologists and nurses who understand disability and health impacts. So, each person on a Behavioral Health and Wellness Team serves a very specific purpose and a different capacity. So, as always, we're looking to say we need to continue to invest in this in our district. So, there we go. And then kind of moving on from that, this is just kind of also, other than next slide, there's there goes into youth mental health first aid. So, this is our first year offering youth mental health first aid. It really is a basic training on how to address mental health with our students in schools. So, we are really targeting our health assistants, our classroom nurses, our campus supervisors. So, I've had the opportunity to work with Rick for our campus supervisors, and then we're also offering it to classified staff and any other licensed staff who might want to attend. We have two trainers. One is a nurse on special assignment, and the other is a district nurse. So, as part of their duties, they're offering this training. And so, we're learning, looking to expand that program so that we can really build that foundational knowledge of mental health and mental illness with all of our educators in our system. All right. And I think I am on my last slide of the evening, so thank you for bearing with me through this. So, as we talk about, the last is really this idea of positive development in peer relationships. And if you look at the slide, there are a combination of things that we are doing. So, you know, when we talk about social emotional learning, we've invested in full-time student success coaches and school support specialists. They are able to do real-time training for teachers, you know, in-the-moment training. They're helping with the implementation of character strong and kindness in the classroom as our Tier One support. In terms of our collaboration, we have our behavioral health and wellness teams, but I'm also going to lean into our partnerships with that. So, our Behavioral Health and Wellness District Team is part of a preventative staffing multidisciplinary team that is partnered with the Oregon Department of Health, and we have foster care, juvenile justice, and mental health supports from Washington County there, so we can staff a student and talk about all the needs of that student and the family to support them. It's really an attempt to prevent moving, you know, going through the judicial system or into foster care. We are also a part of the Washington County Adverse Childhood Experiences ACES Collective, Collaborative, where we're really working on a countywide plan to address ACES, to avoid our students, our youth in Beaverton experiencing any of those events. We are partnering, based on the work of Superintendent Baldairis, we've been able to connect with the Oregon Chapter of the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention and have continued to increase our partnership with Washington County Behavioral Health. Our work is really about prevention because we want to help our students and families before we have to engage law enforcement and really see our work on that end to prevent that. A couple of other things is, you know, we continue to have a flight team. Today was probably one of the hardest days we've had with a lot of responses. So, we have a really strong team. We've unfortunately mastered our skills on how to respond, but we have experts who are there to be able to help our students and our staff when we experience loss in our communities. We also have, as I've said, a really strong suicide prevention program that we're working on, and Base and Beaverton High are both implementing a secondary version of an evidence-based suicide prevention program that is actually student-led through mentorship by these students with a staff who is working with them. And lastly, when we think about our code of conduct, one of the things that we've changed and really helps in terms of prevention of moving towards working with law enforcement is we've changed our practice around drug offense. So, we have five substance use specialists, and we have a bilingual resource facilitator who works with that team. Since the beginning of the year, we've had 197 students who have been referred to our substance use specialists, and their job is really to work through the Teen Intervene Program to find what is the root cause of their substance use and also to work with the families on addressing that. So, we look at substance use as a disease and not as a disciplinary action. So, we are continuing to work with them, and this has been just a tremendous addition, where even having students self-refer to them and having students refer their friends to the substance use specialists. So, in terms of, we're doing quite a bit of work here, and it's been a real pleasure to be able to work with our community partners, especially BPD and Washington County Sheriff's Department, to try to find more proactive responses to student needs.
Good evening. So, our next slide is centered around the recommendation that we regularly engage with our associations around staff mental health, and there are just two areas where I'd like to speak about that. One of them is our direct supports, and the other is the association check-ins we do for more in-the-moment kind of support. So, one of them is more systems supports, and the other is information about staff mental health that might be more individualized. So, we invest in a collaborative relationship with our labor associations, and we meet with them regularly. HR meets regularly with BEA and OSEA for labor management meetings, weekly and monthly. And at those times, we are focused on problem solving, and it's not unusual for, if there are concerns about staff mental health, for it to come up there. Those are more of the responsive kind of connections that we have with our associations. And in the more systems kind of approach, we work directly with both of our labor associations around mental health supports for staff, and a lot of that takes place in our District Insurance Committee, which we are meeting with this month, where we look at benefits utilization, and we also have collaborative relationships and conversations and dialogue around what kind of supports we're going to be asking for from our insurance carriers via our broker. So, right now, we have very rich support with our Canopy Employee Assistance Program that offers a variety of different, very responsive options for staff well-being and wellness. And this year, our benefits, our Health Resources Coordinator, Keisha Weston in HR, secured an OEA grant for staff wellness, and with that grant, she did some work targeting some of our schools with brain and body boosts and a focus on healthy eating. There was some bringing in of a yoga instructor, and then there were webinars where she collaborated with Canopy, our employee assistance program. And we will continue to seek those opportunities and to collaborate and partner with OEA and BEA around those. So, we are committed to supporting our staff's mental health, and I think it's been, there's been a heightened concern about that through the pandemic, and that's why getting, securing grants and working together and partnering is so important for us in HR, working with our labor partners. I think that is what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. We will transition to the next portion, and I will invite our law enforcement partners up to the table with me. And this portion here is addressing some of the items, or the majority of the items, from the Sea Change Report that address directly with law enforcement.
All right. Good evening. My name's Stacy Jupson. I'm your new chief, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for the invitation for this, and I just want to acknowledge Superintendent Gus Baldairis, and thank you Board and Board Chair Tom for having me here tonight. In the way of me being new to this, I want to just take a minute to introduce myself a little bit more than just I'm your chief, if that's okay. This is a very important topic, but I want you to know a little bit about me first and foremost. I'm 27 years into a law enforcement career. Twenty-four of those have been spent serving here in Washington County. Great number of years at Hillsborough Police. I took a short trip down to Eugene for about three years before I'm now back here in Washington County with Beaverton Police Department. I'm a mom. I have three children, all school age, 11, nine, and seven years of age, and so, the subject matter is important to me, not only as a police officer and a chief, but as a mother. So, I brought a couple of friends with me because we like to travel with friends. To my right is Lieutenant Matt Kingsbury, and he is my services lieutenant and oversees what you'll hear me refer to now as our Youth Services Program. To my left here is Sergeant Mike Biersdorf, who is your Youth Services Sergeant and has historically served as a Youth Services Officer for, I believe, roughly around five years. So, he is, to me, my operational expert in this arena. So, again, let me thank you for having me here, and I'll begin with talking about a subject that he alluded to right out of the gate, which is active shooter threats and response from your police department. And as Dr. Mead alluded to, this has become a more prevalent situation in our country and a very disheartening one, obviously. So, what I want to share about that is I think we can talk extensively about active shooter and school threats, but what I want to provide to you is a framework of what you should and can expect from our police department if that were to occur in the school district. We have exceptionally trained officers that will biannually or annually go to that training, and they do that collaboratively with other partners in Washington County, because if we were to have an event of that magnitude, you would be seeing multiple officers from different jurisdictions respond to that. And so, what we need to ensure is that we have all of our officers and deputies in the county operating off of the same, on the same page and through the same tactical lens, if you will. So, one of the things recently that our six SROs or Youth Service Officers went through was this training, which was a practical exercise training, I believe at Tiger High School. And so, that is a full evolution training, bringing in multiple resources to include the fire department and all the responses you would see in that. And so, along those lines, all of our officers in the police department go through that same training, not just the Youth Services Officers. The nice part about having the Youth Services Officers in the school district is that their familiarity with the buildings, with the staff, and the understanding of the protocols within the school district to aid in an event of that magnitude. The other role they play along the lines of that is that they, the Youth Services Officers, would act as like an additional training resource to our frontline officers and patrol to explain and educate in a training format what those protocols look like. And so, that's an ongoing responsibility as it relates to their role. The next area that I want to talk about is what we've described here as extreme violence, but that goes hand in hand. I mean, our role in the schools as Youth Services Officers is to be that immediate response in case of an event of a weapon involvement or threats or imminent severe harm to a student or staff, is to have that ground-level response with the Youth Services Officers and their protocols that they are familiar with within the school district. The next section of this report talks about collection of illegal and prohibited substances. And as you know, in 2020, Measure 110 passed, and so, some caveats have changed within the controlled substance laws to include juveniles, and our role in that is going to be very, very limited in the way of destruction. The school district would handle small quantity destruction. We would certainly offer our services of destruction and handling of controlled substances if we believed that that poses a threat to the staff of the Public Safety Division or the staff of the school district. And along those lines, I guess the point I would make with that is that, as you guys know, fentanyl has become a real problem in our community. The dangers of that are real. And while we may encounter, or the school may encounter, a student that's in possession of a controlled substance such as cocaine or methamphetamine, a lot of times, those can be laced with fentanyl and can be very, very dangerous. So, there may not be any involvement on our end from any need for us to be criminally involved in that situation because that's not at play, but our resource and collaboration to be good partners, to come and assist in that, to be able to destroy those substances with trained personnel as our officers are, to safely handle those substances and get rid of them for the school district. So, that would be kind of our role in that realm. Now, obviously, we're going to be involved in situations, as Carl alluded to earlier, where you may have a student that's distributing controlled substances. That's where we would likely come into play when we'd be in a situation to interact with students. Otherwise, these are low-level offenses, and the Public Safety Department within the school district would handle those and/or the staff or administration, and our involvement would be very limited. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next area that I want to talk about is our role as a consultant for the school district, and I would say that a huge portion of what we do is that, and that's what we should be doing for the staff, for the counselors, for the social workers and the psychologists. But, you know, more importantly, you're problem-solving a lot of times, and having a lot of different opinions in the room and expertise in the room is very beneficial to be able to come up with the best solutions to handle situations in the schools. Our role is oftentimes to pick up a phone and be on the other end of that phone for a staff administrator to handle a situation and be able to give advice as opposed to show up to that situation that a student's involved with and be maybe, I don't want to say the word intimidating in a bad way, but it could be. It could be intimidating for a student to have a police officer show up to a situation where there's no need for that police officer to be there, and just being able to be a good resource to the school, the staff, and the Public Safety Division is important. Please.
I'd like to add something about that. That consultation is very vital, and it's something that has come through loud and clear from our building leaders. They value that support, that partnership, but also, it's about consultation prior to events, being thoughtful about systems that are working or not working, and our law enforcement partners often have a fresh perspective and may challenge our assumptions about how we're doing things. So, just to reiterate that, we really do appreciate that consultation.
Yeah, and along those lines, I know spoken of earlier about ATAP or the Threat Assessment, when we have potential threats that are being yielded either through social media. I mean, that's a collaborative approach with the school district and our officers that are trained in that discipline in public safety, to be able to come to a quick and hopefully seamless resolution to prevent any harm that could be occurring or potentially being planned to occur in the school. So, that's another example of that collaboration. The next area here I want to chat about is the role of discipline and mental health emergencies and our role in that. And just to be clear, we don't have a role in discipline. Law enforcement should not have any role in discipline in the schools, and that is, I mean, I know it was alluded to earlier, kind of creating clean lines so that, you know, we know and staff knows where those involvements need to happen. But as it relates to the code of conduct and student situations involving that, our role is not to be in those situations at all in a disciplinary manner. Now, as alluded to earlier, there are some of the code of conduct that does have implications that are violations of the law. Those situations, we may be brought in to initially consult, or if it's something more egregious or serious, like these sexual assault investigations, and we would obviously be involved in those. And then dovetailing off of that, when you talk about the mental health emergencies, and we know that we have a fair amount of mental health crisis that goes on, our role is to be kind of that extreme situation where we're needing to respond to render a situation safe for the student and the staff. And there's a lot of resources that have been described tonight about how the school district would go about mitigating that situation long before we would need to be involved. The other component of The other component of that that's really unique and is starting to expand is our partnership, which is the MHRT partnership, which partners a full-time CIT-trained police officer with a clinician. And they are partner cars that respond throughout Washington County. They are not youth services officers, so our protocol would be if we have a situation and time's on our side, for our youth services officer to call that team and have that team respond if it was a significant event where a student was in crisis or even a staff member was in crisis and have that be a direct resource. And that's actually our policy, to have that partnership, to have that trained clinician on deck along with our CIT-trained officer to partner with the youth services officer. The next area I'll talk about is the immigration enforcement section of, of the C-Change Report. And there's many aspects of this that are in play right now and I'm going to go over them for you because they're, they're governed by several things. There's an ORS that governs that we do not have involvement in immigration. We have our own Beaverton policy that also governs that. And then recently in the 2021 Police Package Reform to the state, they passed House Bill 3265 that also further emphasizes this point. As a police department, this, this is not something we engage in. We do not ask for immigration status. We do not discuss that as part of our investigative efforts. That is, we have no role in that, nor do we alert immigration services of any investigation that we're working. Next slide. You're already there. Thank you. So currently, we have six full-time youth services officers and a full-time sergeant. We're at full capacity right now. It is my understanding that historically, the school district has been involved in the selection of those individuals that raise their hand to do that job and have that assignment. And that is an absolute assurance, assurance from me that that practice will continue. Your voice, the school district's voice is imperative to who we choose to do that job in the school district. And so that's a commitment that will continue. And, you know, if there's any other questions about that later on, feel free to ask those. In the way of training, when we talk about our youth services officers and the training that they need to go through, this is a specialized assignment. Most of our officers, if not all of our officers, have an extensive amount of police experience before they raise their hand to do this assignment. In our team of seven, we collectively have over 100 years of police experience in that group of employees that serve this school district. There's minimum qualifications to even apply for this assignment. Some of them are just your amount of time in grade, if you will. Like you have to be a police officer for three years before you would even be eligible to apply. Other aspects of that would come through the hiring process and that's that collaboration with the school district to know the temperament, the behaviors, the, the right set of, of things that, that you would want to see in an officer to be working in the school district. And I'm proud to say, I've only been here six months, that what I have seen of this team is exceptional. They are very committed to this school district and they love what they do and they love the, the students and the staff and they're thrilled to come to work every day. And that's truly the sentiment I get from them when I interact with them. They're proud to, to be your youth services officers. When they get chosen, I want to talk about their training and the extent of that for a minute. One of the requirements is that they have to attend a basic SRO training curriculum. That's just a basic curriculum that's created by NASRO that kind of walks them through the essentials of this specialized assignment. And I don't profess to be an expert in this assignment because I've never done it. I had a long career, but I'm not the expert. These folks are. But what I will tell you is that I am very committed, as your chief, to making sure that we include a lot of additional training as it relates to, to these officers. The kind of training that's very tailored and specific to this assignment. And I'm going to read a few of those for you so that you know what those are and the priority of that and the importance of that for me. One is the NASRO course, which is a national conference that occurs every year and it's kind of best practices and recent trends and, and our officers get to go to that to collaborate with other folks in this, in this assignment-based discipline. The next one is, I'll just go down the list. Title IX Investigations, Student Civil Rights Investigations, De-escalation, which is required by all of our police officers, but having additional training in that. Implicit Bias Training, Trauma-Informed Care Training, OC FIT, which is Child Forensic Investigative Interview Skills. So they're specially trained on how to interview children. Cyber Crimes and then, of course, Threat Assessment are another couple that I would add to that list. And there's others. But the point is, is that we need to be committed to training them to be the best at this assignment and to, to be skilled in what they do within the school district. And so I'm very committed to that. Uniforms. So some of the things that were called out in the C-Change Report talked about dressing down the uniform or making the uniform a little bit softer in appearance. And we certainly can do that. The one thing that I will talk about is the importance of our officers having their necessary equipment with them and the tools that they need to successfully navigate the job we ask them to do. And we have, and I've asked our youth services team to explore different alternative uniforms that would be a softer approach or softer look, if you will. But I also want you to keep in mind that while these officers are assigned to the schools, they also take an oath to be responsive to other emergencies in this community. And if we were to have set another emergency in the proximity of a school, a very large, dangerous situation, I would need those officers to seamlessly be able to respond to that incident and have all the equipment and tools necessary to do that job effectively. So those are all considerations that come with talking about uniforms and weapons. But we are committed to being creative because I think we have to be. And we don't have to be dogmatic in the way of how we go about this. And I think we can even have fun with it, quite honestly. I talked to the team not too long ago about creating patches on their, on their sleeves that maybe lines up the school that they're assigned to and having a little bit of fun with it to kind of have that connect, community connection, if you will, with how we appear in the schools. The other piece of that that I'll touch on is I understand these uniforms can be off-putting or intimidating. I want to see, I want folks to see past that. I really do. I want people to see the people in these uniforms and the care of service that, that they sign up to do. And we're not perfect. We often ask imperfect humans to do a perfect job. And I want to humanize this badge and, and I want to connect our folks the way I know we have done and will continue to do in ways that bridge that gap. Data collection and reporting. So this is one area I think is an easy win and something that, quite honestly, I think we should have been doing a better job of is reporting out on what we do in the schools. One of my philosophies outside of just even this topic is being better at branding ourselves as a police department and connecting with our community and talking about how we serve this community. And specifically, how we serve your community in the school district. Part of what that should look like is not only the quintessential, how many arrests? How many referrals? How many things did we investigate? Where were those things initiated from? Within the school district, from a parent, from the community? But also tracking complaints and commendations and what the resolution of those are and how we treat people and the metrics associated to that. I think that's very important. You're our customer and, and we need to be responsive to you as our customer. Also, being able to highlight, as it relates to the reporting, what we do in totality. The camps, the programs, the things that we institute that are there to, to build this bridge with, with the school district. So those are commitments that we've talked about. That will be a biannual report and it's a work in progress. So how, how we report out the first time, if that's not meeting the needs of this board, I want, I want to hear that so that we can meet the needs of this board and the school district.
Thank you, Chief. We're going to transition, I promise. We are rounding the final bend here. We've got one last bit of presentation. I asked Shelley to join us here at the table for a moment. We'll transition into communication and what that looks like as we continue to make improvements in that area.
Thank you. I want to start out by talking about the public safety website. The public safety department maintains its own information on our district website. But over the next two months, CCI is going to be overhauling the web content on that website to include more information specifically about school safety and our safety protocols so parents are aware of those. More information about the SRO program and details about the new IGA when that is signed. We'll also be making updates to the current FAQ that we have there regarding our SROs. Any reports generated, for example, the biannual data polls that you've already heard about, they're going to have a place where they specifically live on that website. And then additions of, you know, photos, video content and that sort of thing. So we're really going to try to beef up that website so that parents have a resource to go to. Also, program highlights. In collaboration with public safety and the SROs, we're going to be more intentional about highlighting the SRO program here in the district. We're going to do that via the community meetings we have, superintendent listening session, for example. Tomorrow, when we're at Mountainside, we're going to be giving an overview of the SRO report to those who attend. The superintendent also has those coffee chats scheduled. Our social media accounts, we're going to see more video content and photos of SROs out in our community and in our schools. Parent Square, utilizing that communication tool that we have with parents, planning on messaging in the coming weeks to give parents an overview of the report that you've seen tonight so that they're aware that, that was completed and that they can dig into that. The Staff Talk Newsletter, another resource, and we also have a weekly community newsletter. So we can use all of these avenues to highlight the good work that the district and the SROs and public safety are doing. In general, we're committed to better transparency and better storytelling as it relates to our public safety department. So we want our community to have a, a full picture of what's going on.
As I stated earlier, we are committed to helping our building leaders better understand the changing dynamics we have, but also to have some understanding of, of the strengths they have in their building perhaps that they can share with colleagues or challenges they have and, and those that colleagues can share. There are two main ways we do that. We have monthly principal and assistant principal meetings and this is an agenda topic where we are hearing loud and clear from building leaders, they value time to learn more about student behavior. They value time to calibrate practice and they value the ability to think strategically about their next steps. It's also something where we have public safety breakfasts that are part of our culture and law enforcement partners do attend those, as do fire department, et cetera. And those are other opportunities to move beyond the school setting, to look at the community setting and to strengthen our practices there. So we'll continue that work.
Thank you, Ken. I will also commend all five of our execs under Dr. Cordy's guidance. Amazing job this year in terms of making sure that we provide enough training and time during our principal meetings. First time ever in the history of this district that I've seen our teaching and learning department so willing to lean into this conversation, make sure that we provide adequate time for discussion, ask questions and make sure that they're problem-solving in the best vein possible. And it's not just going through a scenario, it's the tabletop conversations. It's looking at a colleague and saying, okay, so Ugana, how would you respond to it? Or Gus, how would you respond to that and why is it that you would respond to that? So it's that question and answer to be able to look and field things in a different manner than how we typically have done. As you think about the role of an elementary principal, you're a singleton, many of those. Only 16 of our schools have an assistant principal. The other remaining of those schools, they're a single administrator, so they're taking their actions upon themselves and haven't moved forward. That's where that role of consultancy is incredibly important as we look to law enforcement, but also with one another. So it's helping to establish that line of communication during those meetings and kind of see, find where those good safety points are to check in with one another. And lastly here, the final point I want to make, Chief Jepson has already spoken to data collection and our reporting back to the board, but also our community as a whole. Our continuous improvement, not only is the chief committed, I am committed, we are committed to a quarterly meeting between the two of us, probably include the city manager as well, just to talk about what's working and what's not working. That's in addition to the weekly meetings that our SROs have with Rick Puente, in addition to the monthly meetings that I have with the sergeants, to be able to do those check-ins. Again, getting information via Rick and the SROs who are actually doing the work in the schools, but then taking that to the next level with the sergeants who work with all of those YSOs, I've got to shift my own mindset here, our YSOs in all of our schools across the district. You're primarily seeing BPD up here. You, please know, you've got the commitment of Washington County Sheriff's Office also sitting here with us, very much in support and in alignment. I've got the chief's commitment in terms of that ongoing work with the county. They're in collaboration all the time. In addition to that, as you know, we have one site, which is Hillsborough Police Department. I would say in some areas, Hillsborough Police Department is a step ahead of us than where we are today. And so we, they're a good thought partner in this and a lot of the training that the chief has spoken of, our piece is already in place in Hillsborough and have been for a number of years, certainly during Dr. Balderas' tenure in Hillsborough School District as well as Chief Jepson's. So with that, we'll, I'll invite Danielle and Miss, Danielle Struck, Danielle Struckmeyer, Danielle Hudson and Ken Struckmeyer back to the table to help field any questions and comments that you may have. Thank you. I apologize for the length of our presentation, but there was a lot of information here.
Thank you. We appreciate the thorough presentation. Questions from board members? And Eric and Susan, if you have that like button where you can put up your virtual hand, well, I see Susan, you've got, why don't we start with you and then we'll loop back around to, I think Ugana will be next after that.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody involved in this very thorough presentation. Very much appreciated. I also appreciate that the topics that was covered today was very much on our student advisory boards. Very high, we had students last year that were discussing mental health and we had students last year talking about SROs. So I'm glad that we had both of those discussed today and I'm excited about the progress we're making. The question I have is, I know that there, you know, especially listening last year to our students, that there's a concern, especially with students of color or, or, you know, our marginalized students or LGBTQ population of not feeling comfortable with, you know, SROs in particular. So I know there's a lot of plans to, you know, soften and to make everybody, you know, more education and training and everything. You know, I just want to find out how, what's the, what's the plan in terms of making our marginalized students feel more comfortable or helping them feel more comfortable? Thank you.
Hi, Susan. This is Ken Struckmeyer. I think there are a couple of layers to that. First and foremost, it's about creating culture and opportunities for interactions to happen in ways that are non-threatening. So from, from a building leadership perspective, understanding that our law enforcement partners that are serving our community may have opportunities to interact with students in ways that are less formal and that are just being a part of the school community, being present at events, having a regular presence on the campus. And that creates a sense of familiarity and an opportunity to make sure that that first level of safety is addressed. It also means that we have to be thoughtful, that when things are more formal and we're interacting with students, that we are thoughtful to that and that we're listening to them and that we're working in partnership with them and their families to and that we're working in partnership with them and their families to take those concerns seriously, and to make sure that we do our best to address those concerns as they come.
Thank you, Ken. I have another quick question, because I heard Chief Jessup use the M-H-R-T initials, and I know M-H must be Mental Health, but I didn't know what R-T meant.
I'm sorry for that, for using acronyms. Mental Health Response Team.
Well, thank you. And again, I have tons of comments and questions, but I'm just going to eliminate it to the one I had right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ugana?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and also thank you for sending it ahead of time, giving us much time to parents through the information. Some of my questions were answered during our meeting with Dr. Mead and Dr. Baldaros, but I would still ask those questions here for the benefit of those at home who are curious to know. But before I do, I have some new questions that came up while the presentation was going on. I wanted to know, what is the frequency of the training that both the SROs will be receiving, and also the training that staff will be receiving on restorative practices? Is this going to be an annual training or monthly training? So what is the frequency of the trainings going to be? And then my second question would be, when an SRO is called into a situation where they're not supposed to be called into, what should be their response to that? And then I can let the rest of the board members ask their questions, and then I can come back to some of my questions.
I can speak to the trainings in the district. So we do a regular, pretty much like a three-year rotation cycle, where we do a training, and then we try to bring people back every three years to revisit that training. One of the things that we like to do, particularly around working with our students experiencing disability with our police partners, is really trying to do that at least once a year and getting that schedule on, because we have different officers who come on and our programs change. But it's really pretty often a three-year rotation as a refresher. The one training that we do every year is called Safety Care, and that is a training around de-escalation strategies. And those who are trained do a two-day training for their first training, and then do a one-day yearly training. But everything else is on a three-year cycle.
Yeah, I'll try to tackle the other question related to the youth services training. A lot of these trainings are not held in the kind of frequency that you would think, so it's the scheduling of those. The basic school is something that we schedule and we get them to, but some of these additional trainings, de-escalation and trauma-informed things, some of these things are being legislated, and there will be more robust curriculums that are created to be able to address that training need, and those will be a priority. But the goal certainly is, within that first year, that we have someone assigned to the schools in that assignment, that we would get them through several of these big-box trainings that are very important. The implicit bias training is something we have to do annually as part of our police certification, and some of these things are just going to get incorporated into an annual platform, so they will be done annually.
Ugana, you also asked a question. When an SRO is called into a situation that's not appropriate, how can we expect them to respond? Quite honestly, that's actually the work in which we're doing right now in terms of our consultancy and work with our principals right now, running through those scenarios. It's really helping us to understand what the role of law enforcement is and what it's not. And I can tell you in my check-in last week with our sergeants, we have seen a huge decrease in calls, both in Washington County as well as Beaverton Police Department, to schools for things that were becoming run-of-the-mill, frequency kind of thing out there in schools, significantly different. Now, it's not to say it won't happen, but when it does happen, what we really want to do, from my lens as a schoolperson, I know the chief will have her own perspective on this, is that I really want our YSOs to be able to engage in that level of dialogue and conversation with the administrator in an appropriate fashion that puts them back into that consultant role, to say, I'm here to support you, but it is not appropriate for me to step into that arena. That is a school issue, something that should be dealt with by school personnel. And I know our YSOs are well-equipped for that conversation. I just want us, we just need to make sure our administrators are prepared for that. It's not that they're not willing to provide service, it's not an appropriate service that they're being asked to provide at that time. So, thank you for the question.
Sunita and then Karen?
Thank you very much for the in-depth information that was provided to us and the time that was given to us beforehand to get our questions answered, or at least tell you guys so that you could bring the answers back to us. And it gives me great pleasure to see Chief Jepson, who's a mother, a parent, who cares about safety of all kids. Safety is a necessity for all the children, whether they are brown, black, it is a necessity. But with time, our population has changed, and the fact that you guys are doing implicit bias training gives me comfort. But at the same time, there may be kids who may have language problems, who may not be able to express themselves of what is happening. How are you dealing with things like that? And what is the proportion of your seven officers? Do you have anybody who speaks the language of the majority of the community? Or how is that? I would like to hear from you about that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I don't believe we have anyone that is bilingual. We do use language services, and we do have other officers that are not specifically assigned to the schools that could be called as a resource for translation, and many other translation services that are available to our officers, but not currently. We do not have anyone that speaks Spanish.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sunita, if I may? We will also always provide those services from our MLD department. We will always call upon our own staff, if necessary, to step into a situation, most especially if we're able to deliver a situation in their own native tongue. It's going to be far more comforting than people just talking at them and not understanding. So please know we have Toshiko's commitment to that as well.
Yeah, and let me point out, too, that I said bilingual, and then I referred to Spanish. We don't have any of our officers that speak any other language other than English.
Okay. That may be something you can look into. Another question, if I have the time. There was a question that was asked about the budget issue, like how is the budget going to pay for this? And the answer we received that it's multidisciplinary, and there is a lot of, but it didn't answer, at least to me, didn't answer the question, if there are budget cuts, what's going to happen to this team? Is there, and that may be our CFO's question to our CFO?
That's not an appropriate question for Mike. Mike is the one who shows us what money we have and what money we don't have. It's up to the rest of us to determine how those services are provided. I can tell you this, there will be budget cuts. Those are going to be some significant conversations that need to be had, but it's not solely done in the Department of Teaching and Learning, or in operations, in any component of operations. It is a group effort and conversation. So looking at the model in which Danielle has worked on since 2019, and building the BH&amp;W, it's really a matter of, okay, so what's essential to ensure that we still have that network of individuals there to support our kids? Can we promise that there won't be cuts? No. I can't promise that class size will go up. There's, it's outside of our realm.
So maybe a more specific question to that would be, how much of our Esser's money is paying for the eight restorative practice consultants?
So none of our Esser money funds those positions, because there are other positions, so the restorative practices trainers, that's one responsibility of the roles of eight other people. So they're not just RP trainers, but in terms of the people who are trained to be restorative practice trainers and deliver that training as part of their job, their larger job, they are not funded through Esser.
Thank you.
Karen?
Hi, good evening. Thank you to everybody for all of the work that you put into this. So I think, I appreciated that we were focusing on the mental health piece, and one of the pieces that you mentioned said, our work is about prevention, and that we're taking a proactive approach to student needs. So as Sunita was asking about how we do cuts, I think it's important for us to think about, as we're doing the cuts, how do we maintain the level of support that we have, or at least try to maintain as much of that level of support substance use specialists? I mean, that seems like something that would be very crucial at this time for our students, as well as some of the other supports that you mentioned, but I appreciated all the details on that. With respect to the SRO piece, you mentioned, Dr. Mead, the piece of needing the clearer roles, and I think that was a huge kind of finding from the report, that we do need to center on that. And the SROs don't have a role in discipline, like you mentioned, in that consultation piece is crucial in different areas. So thank you for clarifying that. With respect to the selection and the training, the chief mentioned eight or nine different trainings that were happening, and I think somebody had already asked a question, implicit bias and things like that. Are those trainings that you listed current trainings, or trainings that you're going to be providing, or that they will be provided?
Well, it's mixed. So some of those trainings are, YSOs have already attended and have gone through that training. The goal is to have them continuously do some of these trainings, like the OC fit, the things that are a little bit more intrinsic, like the forensic child interview stuff. I mean, those are more specific trainings that takes a while to get into those classes, but overall, there's a deeper list, and it's in the packet of things I'd like to see our officers that are assigned to the schools have available to them, and that's the priority. The only mandatory ones right now is the basic youth services curriculum or course that they attend, but we would like to go to a model more similar to Hillsborough's that has kind of a platform of training that they would continually go to.
Yeah, I think that's one of the other pieces from the report, that need for training, the opportunity that we mentioned through collaboration for our trainings that maybe they could take as well. Like you mentioned, there's two of all of the SROs that took that threat assessment training, but that's something that we do regularly, so that might be something that could be a regular training for them. And then, as we talked about, the ongoing conversations, I think that's going to be crucial. You mentioned ongoing conversation, you both mentioned, the district and the chief, in looking at that data, and really centering on what are the needs of our students, not just of what the board would like, but what are the needs of our students? And I think, over time, coming back with what is our data showing, and how are our students being impacted positively or negatively, and how are we breaking that data down to our different student groups, whether it's our LGBTQ students, or our BIPOC students, and other groups of students? And as mentioned by several board members, our students who are part of the LGBTQ community, some of our female students, when it came to some of the sexual assault pieces, and some of our BIPOC students didn't feel, felt like our SROs and our own staff needed more training to be able to, for their needs to be met, or for them to feel safer, or to be able to, when they express what they're experiencing, to have those experiences, in their point of view, validated and supported. And so as I saw the listing of trainings, we do have the implicit bias training, but I don't know what other trainings maybe we could think about, or other, I don't even know, like sentence frames that our officers could use in our own staff when supporting our students in those situations. And you mentioned that we don't have any BIPOC, or bilingual, or bicultural officers, and I think that as we humanize the officers, you mentioned that was important, because we're mothers, we're parents, we're community members. It's still, even within that humanizing, when people don't look like me, that I know have power over me, it's, and if we're, those situations can be tense and scary, even in the best scenarios. So I think that the more we can work to diversify our officer force and build that linguistic diversity as well, it will benefit our students. And even, I'm sure you don't, you know, diversity not just in race, but gender expression or gender identities and other types of identities, it would, I think, be welcomed by our students and our community. So, thank you.
Yeah, and that's a priority for our police department in general, is to be more culturally competent, and to have that training for our staff and our officers and our youth services officers. So I couldn't agree with you more.
Thanks.
And Karen, I want to just also mention that while we're going to be collecting data, and it's going to be coming to the board, we're not waiting for that data to make changes potentially to our programming over the course of the year. That's why those ongoing conversations are going to be so integral, because if things aren't working, and we know they're not working in January, we're not going to continue it in February, March, April, May, you know, type scenario. So those meetings are just as crucial to the data as we move forward.
And I think one part I didn't, thank you, and I appreciate all the details, like, we had so many more questions, but they were answered by all of you, and the report actually was very detailed on all these different things that we are committed as a district to improve. So I look forward to seeing that piece, and then also how we train our administrators. We are calling, we were calling SROs at times that we didn't need to call SROs. And so as we clarify those roles, I think that that will be important for our community. And then having that communication piece that Shelley talked about, too, and being very transparent, that will be important as well.
My first question is to you, Board Chair Collette, are we going to have another venue or opportunity to speak to this subject in future meetings?
That's a good question. I think if you have something to say, I would say it right now. I'm not sure what the next step is from here, because we've received the superintendent's recommendations, and it's a program under the superintendent. I'm sure that we'll be hearing about it in future reports. It sounds like there's going to be reports in front of the board that are going to be But if you're looking for another meeting in the near future, TBD.
Thank you. First of all, if this is going to be the one opportunity, I want to first say, as a member, speaking on behalf of myself as a member of the school board for the last seven, going on eight years, I apologize that we, as a board, it took us to get to this point before we asked for more in-depth data, so that we can do a better dive of meeting the needs of our students and staff. So I take responsibility for that, for being a part of a board, that was just something that we did not ask for, and I won't say that we didn't think it was broken, so we didn't mean to. It's just that we saw that partnership being so strong that we thought it was going, and we have since found out through doing this research, and we definitely heard from our students, it was not working for all of our staff or for all of our students. So I am glad that we have done this deep dive. I think it was work long overdue, and I'm very, very pleased to see the work that we are going to be moving forward because of doing that deep dive. Secondly, I want to say how much I value being in a community that puts children's safety, puts staff safety, and that our partners of the City of Beaverton would invest in this program. That is not what happens in a lot of other states and a lot of other cities. And I want Washington County and the City of Beaverton to know how much I appreciate that they value that, that they that they value that, that they would have people specifically assigned to keep our children and our staff safe. So that is something that I just do not take for granted. And I know that going forward, that may not always be the case, and it may be a different conversation that the board has to have. But for the years that it has happened, I want to thank our community. I want to thank Chair Colette and Vice Chair Perez for taking on this work and working with an outside group and the time that they invested in this very important topic. I want to thank the staff for giving this very thoughtful concern. And because this was a cultural change, we had to work with administrators. Our work is not done. It's work that is ongoing. But it's still work that is starting and to be, and is starting. So I appreciate taking on this work on top of all of the other things, because it is so important to the core of who we are as a culture. So I really, really appreciate that the staff took on this added work and the work, the thought process that, that went into this. So I just, I just wanted to say those things, because I think it is so important in this work moving forward. So thank you so much. Because at the time we took on this work, it was emotionally charged. And I am a believer that you try not to make big decisions when something is emotionally charged. And we were able to step back and look at the information and hear from our students and hear from our families and hear from our parents and hear from our community. And we're still not going to, everybody is still not going to be happy with how, going forward. I have yet to be in the eight years, find anything where everyone is happy all the time. So, but I believe we have set a course that we will be better open to how to continue to have that very important dialogue. Now to get to my question. I would like to know if we have set up any kind of protocol or procedure that let's say a student or a staff member or a community member or a parent has a direct complaint about one of our youth service officers. What will be the protocol of how we handle that and who will be making that call? Will it be going to our public safety director? Will it be starting off with the principal that works directly with? I would just like to know how our community is going to know if there's something that they are, are not pleased with, that how we're going to handle that.
I'll try to tackle that. We wouldn't treat that any dissimilar to any other complaint that we'd have of an officer. If, if something gets routed through the channels and it gets to our police department, which it should, then that would go to our professional standards division to be investigated. And any investigation through the professional standards division would have a full comprehensive investigation along with an outcome and contact with the reporting party. And when I talked about the reporting, one of the things I touched on was the complaints and accommodations. And I think we have an obligation to capture that and talk about the resolutions and outcomes and lessons learned from, from things and mistakes that get made, if there are mistakes that were made. And so there is a healthy system already in place for that.
But with that student, that student probably would not know how to, would that student, are we going to, in our communications plan, are we going, is there going to be a way that would, if that student had a complaint about something, or a parent had a complaint about something, or a staff member, would we start off at the school first? Would we, where's that process?
I see where you're going with this, yeah. I, I think we have just standardized protocol for taking complaints, but maybe Carl can address that more specifically within the school district.
Yeah, it's a great question. First off, if a student has a complaint about a process or a parent has a complaint about a process and the manner in how something was dealt with, whether it was dealt with by the staff or YSO in our school, first natural place typically is to come to the school for that, that dialogue, that conversation, to be able to say, okay, what are the facts behind the situation and the sort? Does not prohibit a parent or a student from filing that complaint through our complaint process? And if in fact, it's related directly to a law enforcement agent, agency, then that's going to be passed on to them, because they have a direct supervision. We don't supervise our YSOs. They, they continue to be supervised within the chief's realm. Outside of that, if in fact, there's a complaint within the process, and let's say it's a student who doesn't like the manner in which a counselor dealt with the situation, that ideally is best dealt with at the building level. Doesn't mean that it always will be. Somebody may choose to file a complaint. We, as a school district, will make sure that that gets into the hands of their direct supervisor to do follow-up and the sort. The intent is not to bury anything. If in fact, we have a parent who comes and says to the principal, "I'm not happy about what happened with a YSO", that, we've got some training to do with our own principals to say, "This is what you need to do with that information. It's not yours to solve. This is the manner in which that needs to be then funneled over into the appropriate agency, whether it's Washington County, Hillsborough Police, or Beaverton Police Department." But we've got some training, and I'm glad you said that, because I've not done any training on that very specifically with our administrators, so.
Well, just going back to the point of, if we have a student that does not feel, it's, it's hard enough for a student to come and make a complaint. I mean, that's hard for any, but if they don't feel validated with their, with their thought process of, "I don't feel I was heard. I do not feel you understood what my, my situation was." Again, I think a lot of these are going to be at the school level and not to the YSO level. But wherever it is that that student has a way and to go back to the principal or go back to the assistant principal, or whatever it is, that that will then be communicated to then, whether it be Rick, who's in the weekly meetings. I just want to make sure that there is direct feedback. So we're not waiting a year down the road or six months down the road that something is broken, that there is an immediate sort of thing, whether it's justified or whatever. But we, that the students feel that there is a place to be, to be heard. So just how we would go about, because we have in the past had complaints about certain officers and people felt that they were not, not heard, so that we can have that heard. And then my last question is about the uniforms. I know that you have, I've, I've seen at, at ballgames and that kind of thing, you, we have officers that come and patrol games and they're not in, they're on bikes or they're walking around campus and that kind of thing, and they're, they're in different sorts of, of uniforms. I know I've, I've seen at your headquarters, you have people that are not always in uniform. Is, is there a way that, because I, I do want to keep that officer safe so that they can do their job and have the tools to do their job? Who ultimately is going to make that decision?
Well, ultimately, that would be me. But to your point, we do have a lot of different versions of uniforms. And, and that's what I alluded to earlier, is like, we have some flexibility with this discussion. The, the thing that is kind of imperative for me is just to ensure that our officers have necessary equipment to do their job. And I don't want to create a situation where we're limiting the tools available to them to successfully mitigate a situation. And there's a lot of gear that we're required to carry. And then when you even talk beyond that to, let's say, a critical event within a school, a lot of the responsibilities of our officers over time has changed. We carry tourniquets now. We carry Narcone, wound packing.
Narcone?
Narcone materials. The, the more we soften, the more we try to clean up the uniform, the less space we have to carry essential equipment that is very time-specific. And if we were to have some kind of mass casualty event in a school, that'd be the last thing I would want, is for our officers not to be able to be in a situation to pivot and render aid and have those, those pieces of equipment. So I, there's a balance, and I, and I'm committed to striking that balance. A lot of folks have intrepidation about the load-bearing vests that you see officers carry. And a lot of those officers, I don't choose to carry one of those, but a lot of officers carry them because they do have pouches and things where they can put a lot of gadgets and stuff, if you will. But we are testing an alternative load-bearing vest model right now that's a little bit softer look. One of our youth services officers has that on. So I hope that answered your question.
It, it does. And just speaking on my own behalf, you know, I want to say that when I see, when there is conflict and we always, and we have conflict, not just in our own school district, but around the state, around the country, when there's a conflict of groups not seeing or feel intimidated or feeling, I, I am personally a believer, as much as we can, is to try to keep people conversing and talking and understanding why there are folks that feel uncomfortable with things and, and trying to work around it that way, rather than just pushing off in our own corners and thinking it's going to resolve itself. So if, if our students are, are, do not feel comfortable, then we, we need to, to look at, at something. I'm just wondering how far down the road we go. But I absolutely understand as a, as a parent, if safety is an issue, I want that officer to be able to administer that tourniquet or that Narcone or whatever it is. For, and my, my last comment, when talking, when I have community members that ask me about this subject, I think of our youth services officer as why we wear seat belts or why we wear helmets now. I know that wearing a seat belt is not going to prevent a car accident from happening. But I hope that when, if there is an accident, that seat belt is going to keep them, a person alive and simply safe. Same thing with the helmet. I do not think a CYC SO is going to, a YSO is going to help keep all threats, keep all bad things, keep everything away from our schools. I do not see that that presence is, but I see it as like a safety belt. If we have them in our community and they know how to react to a student and they have the tools and they have the training, it's going to make me feel a lot better than if we have nothing. So again, I thank all of your men and women that are dedicated to our, to our, to our school district and being such a strong partner, and I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Ugana?
Well, now that Becky has thrown the question open, if we're going to get a chance to speak on this again, and I'm glad you asked that, Becky. So now that we know we may not revisit this issue, I'm going to have to break my mind at this point. So I am not a huge fan of the SRO program. But my commitment is to the safety of our students. However, when you look at safety, it depends on your standpoint. From the standpoint of some students, the presence of uniformed police officers do not guarantee their safety. They are not, they don't feel safe. So if a student comes to school and is uncomfortable with a, a police officer in school, that's not safety. However, I'm glad that you're willing to strike that balance in reimagining how YSOs, SROs present in our schools, so that our students, to a great extent, will feel that level of safety. Like Becky said, we may not please everybody. I am so happy with the information provided. It has enlightened me more on what the program is all about and what it looks like. So this study has been a very in-depth one for me and an eye-opener for me. But I would not detract, they would not detract from the fact that most students that look like me are not comfortable with the presence of police officers in the school. So I, I am hoping that you would continue to, like you said, strike that balance on how to, on how SROs and YSOs are, you know, uniformed, how they dress in the schools. Maybe that could help address those fears and apprehension. And that said, my one last question would be, this might be a Carl Mead question, Carl. For the benefit of those at home, I know I've asked this question before, how does this new model, how is it better? How is it different from how the program was run before? How is it better from how the program was previously implemented? So for a parent or a student at home wondering, going forward, what does this recommendation do for us? How does it make the SRO model, previous model, better? What would you tell them?
I'm going to pass that baton, because I don't have the experience of having, in essence, a full-scale YSO model that our chief is familiar with from Hillsborough School District. So I'm going to ask her to respond to your question.
Okay. I'll do my best. Well, I think this report eliminated some areas that we have some work to do in. And I think that's first and foremost. So as I've mentioned, I've only been here six months. And I, I'm a believer that when you do this kind of work and you highlight the areas of weakness and areas of vulnerability, that that gives us an opportunity to step up and, and do things differently and collaborate. And that's already happening. I, I wasn't here prior, so I can't speak to that. But I'm committed to some of the, what you touched on even earlier about the comfort level of some students with, with the uniform, with us. And because, because you look different is, I mean, that's a society issue right now that we're addressing in law enforcement and having to do a lot of work in. And we're committed to that. But the way we do that is to, to come together and to get uncomfortable sometimes in conversations, and I'm a believer in that. And part of my goal is, one of the things that came out of that sea change report that struck me was a lot of students said they didn't know what the youth services officers did. Well, we're changing, we're going to change that. That's a commitment, is that there's fear in things that are unknown. There's intimidation in things that are unknown. So let's, let's move, move the curtain back a little bit. Let's open up some dialogue and share and get in the classrooms and get in front of the students to talk about what we do as a program and why we're here and the importance of safety and how that works as a partnership. And so these recommendations that you see is a comprehensive approach to creating a public safety system within the school district that I don't believe existed before this work was done. And so I, I think, I think we're on the right trajectory, and I hope I answered your question. I think the proof is going to be downrange.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate your answers. And I want to thank everybody sitting up there today. You have reduced my apprehension regarding the program. I was not the same person that I was a month ago. My opinion on the SRO program, though it has not changed, but is not as strong as it was a month ago. But that is because of the information that you have provided. And it's also because of the work that you're willing to do to make it much more better and much more user-friendly for our students. So for those at home, I just hope that, for that parent, that mother or father of a black or brown student at home, I am just like you all. I had apprehension about this program. I hope that tonight we would have a little bit of comfort in knowing that the school district and the city are trying to make this better for our students. It may not, this may not be the answers that we're looking for, but it's certainly not going to be the same, I'm hopeful, that it's not going to be the same as it was a year ago or even a month ago. So that gives me a level of comfort, and I hope that brings comfort to that parent of a student of color who is still very much apprehensive, and I'm still very much apprehensive, but I am hopeful that it would get better from here on. I am hopeful that we would see a, a district where all students will feel safe irrespective of their color, gender, religion, or however they identify. I am very hopeful that moving forward, things are going to get better for all our students. I am still not a fan of SROs, but I am hopeful that things would get better from here on. Thank you very much.
Karen?
Just from something you just said, that I just wanted to kind of point out, and I think that this kind of speaks to our changing community here, is that like Ugana, Sunita and I, we don't look different. We actually are part of the majority of the community. But that's one of those pieces is where we're trying, what I'm hearing you say is not that we look different, but that we actually, you're work, you're going to work with us to try to figure out how to build those bonds. to try to figure out how to build those bonds across, um, differences, right? Um, because we're trying to figure out the humanity of our students and of each other in this work. Um, but one of those pieces that we continue to, when we're working on bias and things, is that we don't look different. It's just that we're all, we are, there's a plethora of shades in identities here in, in Beaverton, and that's something that has changed over the last few years. But I just wanted, um, to point that out, I guess. Thank you.
I'm checking in with Eric and Susan. Do you guys have any further questions, comments?
I had a comment, not really a question, Tom, so I'll just do a quick one.
Yeah.
Um, we might hear some quiet background, so I apologize for that. But, um, I'm really pleased that the district and, you know, and the board, before, we didn't, like, you know, react, um, really rapidly. I know there was a lot of districts that moved fast, but I was really pleased that, um, we took our time, we got consultants to help us with the journey. Um, we, you know, we really checked with stakeholders, the community, both students as well as parents and staff and overall community. And so, you know, I think that really helped guide us. And I think, and I'm kind of proud that, um, you know, we're not doing something totally reactionary and kind of echoing what Becky said earlier. But like, we know that, you know, the program was at a certain level, but I think we're going to take it to the next level. And so, it was really made me happy to see, you know, a lot of good recommendations from C-Change. And then the district's response is like, you know, yes, we're going to implement a lot of things. And then having the, the Beaverton Chief here today saying, yes, there's lots of things we can do better. To me, as a board member, it makes me feel good that we didn't react too quick and we're evolving together and making YSO into SRO and making the program better. So, it's not really hard questions, but, um, I liked the reports and I liked the patience that everybody did to make the process, you know, flow better. So, it's just really a comment, not really a, you know, a hard question at this point.
Thanks, Eric. Any other questions, comments, or Sunita?
Uh, mine is just a comment. Um, my kids are grown and out of the school district, but if I had to send my kids, and if there was an active shooting in the school, I would feel safer with you guys there. So, I want to thank you for your service. And I want to thank you that you are willing to do the implicit bias training and, and work with the students and put students first. So, thank you very much.
All right, last call. Any other questions, comments from the board? Great, I think, um, thank you so much for the thorough report, really appreciate it. Um, Dr. Baldair, do you have some final comments for us?
I just really appreciate the chief and, and the staff and the police department. And again, as stated through the C-Change report, that there was never a recommendation to remove the SROs, but to review the program and to make sure that we have changes made that we will be making. So, there was never a recommendation to remove the SROs from our school campuses. I think that's something that we want to be clear about. But also, to the police chief in terms of, um, what we're doing, this is a broader community endeavor. So, the school district, we have 40,000 kids. Our school system as a whole, and, um, we have two, roughly 285,000 people that are residents of the school district, roughly. Beyond Beaverton, we have 285,000 community members that make up the Beaverton school system. I think it's a collaboration between not just the police department in Beaverton, Washington County, Hillsborough, to ensure that we continually change and reinforce best practices in policing to support our kids inside and outside of school. Our kids are in schools roughly six hours of the day, six and a half hours of the day, roughly. The rest of the time, they're out in our community. So, we have to make sure that we work in tandem with our community to ensure that we're, uh, understanding how to keep them safe and keep our broader community safe. And I look forward to the work ahead, because we do have work ahead. And I'm very excited for that. And I appreciate the board's commitment over the last two years. It's been two years since we started this process, to move this system forward, because it's been long overdue. And I truly appreciate the support of, uh, again, our partners as we continue to just, again, be better for our kids and our families. So, thank you.
And with that, I'll, uh, close our work session, and, uh, everybody have a good night.